I can say for a rainy day, but if Kelly has told us that, yep, we can handle it, then I'm comfortable that-
I think she said it with gritted teeth.
Well, I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that for a minute. So, okay, any other comments on the actual facilities assessment study?
Well, I was just going to comment on Lynn's observation that he thinks that the school board shouldn't have to fund the facility assessment study, and I think in a perfect world, that's absolutely right. We're supposed to be using this money for ongoing upkeep of the schools and improvements, and not just for doing assessments. However, given the fact that you were just at a meeting in which we were asking for how many million dollars from the commissioners, I think that maybe we should just go ahead and pay for this one ourselves.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Schumaker, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple. Lynn, if we were to go ahead and get the okay to do the facility assessment study, how long would it take for that study to be completed, before it would be completed?
And I-
Oh, yeah, just an estimate.
I'm saying, I'd really like to have it done by the summer, if at all possible. And it depends a little bit on how quickly we can bring somebody in to do the work, of course. But, you know, I was told, and like I say, when talking with the Union County folks, that it took them, they said the actual grinding out of the study work was about six months, and there was two months after that of other work that they did before they finally presented to their board. I'm not sure what all the other things were that the staff were doing. But I would like to have the basic work done by the consultant by sometime this summer, if we could let him go, you know, first of February.
So, we wouldn't have it available to us for the budget cycle?
Not all of it, no. No. And, you know, and that, again, I might talk to Bill, and he'll say, you know what, I've got a bunch of people sitting around just ready to go, or I talked to Todd, and he could say the same thing. I mean, all these fellows, everybody's looking for work in the industry. I'm sure we could get some competitiveness and some very capable firms going after this work, so.
I just think, bouncing on what Dr. Phillips says, what Lynn had said, if we just delay this, and we don't start working with the commissioners on a plan, and we don't have information, the bond's a whole 'nother thing, and we haven't even gotten there yet. And that's why I've avoided talking about those items, because I have a lot of concerns about how we do that. But this facility study, if we don't hurry up and put a mark on the map and figure out where we are, then all we're going to do is continue to find ourselves dealing with roofs that are leaking, equipment that's failing, and mold and mildew issues galore. And we're not in any position to figure out how to prioritize. Part of this study helps us prioritize what we really need. Instead of having all these projects at 200,000 and figuring out which one's the zero project, and which one's the one project, and which one's the two, we won't be swagging it, because right now, your team walks into a school and spends, what, a day? Is that what y'all did in December?
A few hours, per school, a few hours, literally.
A few hours per school?
Yes.
And you made a list of stuff, literally stuff, through a quick walkthrough, and you didn't assess the equipment, you didn't really look at the make of the equipment, you just made some assessments, and you threw a price tag on it, and you walked out.
Now, granted, we've got people that work on those day in and day out.
Right.
And we're going in with that knowledge, knowing that that system isn't working properly, and its life expectancy is less than desirable. So, we have that kind of information at hand. But, you know, to go to the chairman's point, we don't know what the life expectancy is. We could look it up, we can get that information. Our staff are so limited, honestly. A good example was on the holidays, people take off. We're struggling, you know, to get through those holidays with limited staff. And when everybody comes back, now, the work orders go right through the roof when everybody comes back, because they've had a chance to kind of take a deep breath, they're coming back in the school, and they're going, well, that lights out, I don't, you know, I don't like the way that door is closing. And suddenly, you have a whole host of work orders. Not uncommon, I'm just saying, that's what takes our everyday staff hours up, is just fixing what needs to be fixed. We don't have people to sit down and plan this. The CIP that Dave is, nothing against your document, Dave, and I like it, because it does document all that in a very, a way that's always the same for every school, and you can look through the document and see the comparisons and all. What it doesn't give you is the detail that this document does. And I'm not saying that it's rocket science, I'm not saying that at all, but it does take somebody, I've done these, I know what it takes, and it just takes somebody to expend the time, to put the boots on the ground, to gather the information, and to say, okay, the assessment is this, and here's the solution. It takes writing that document. That doesn't happen by Dave and me and a handful of people from our shop. It can't get done, unless you want us to only focus on that, and then we'll take a shot at it. But it would take that kind of dedication, it would take an investment of people solid for, you know, four to six months at least, for us to do that kind of document.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu, you had any further comments?
Yes, I've got just a few more comments that I wanted to add, and that is, you know, each one of us own a home. And I've never had a survey of my home as far as what needs to be done or anything. I'd probably be surprised, you know, as you get older, things tend to sort of get, be putting on the back burner, that type thing. But in an ideal world, which is what we're talking about here, you know, spending this type money to get a document that we may not even get funding for, is a real concern to me. I mean, if I look at my own home situation, and they say, well, yeah, Mr. Schu, you're going to need a new roof, and your heating and air system has gone out, you know, yeah, you're going to have to lay out about $20,000 to get this stuff straightened out. Well, that's why the school system is in a fix-as-it-break type mode, and that's the way it's been, between the fix-and-break type mode and building schools, that's all we've got done for the last 15, 17 years, fix and break and build schools. But, you know, I take, you know, every word you said, you know, Barry, about, you know, where you're at on this, and I know that you're big on getting this done, and I am too, but there's got to be a plan somewhere. And we can talk about it all day, but until we have a viable source, a viable way of, you know, paying for it, then it won't get done. As I mentioned earlier about the salary study, and then we did the ORED, the ORED study, we spent, what, $43,000 for the ORED study? And like I mentioned to you, in my notes to you, and copied to the superintendent and the chair, I was, personally, I was disappointed in what we got, because you guys did, had already gave most of that information to us already. We had that information. Matter of fact, we actually had a little bit more than they gave us already, but that wasn't but $43,000. We're talking a half million dollars here. I don't want to spend money, folks, that we desperately need to find out something that we basically already know. We know this, because you've got these things. Sure, the things that we don't have, the life study, I mean, the life expectancy and the remainable, remaining use of a certain item, I know that's, you can find that, and staff, obviously, is always a problem, you don't have enough to get done what you need to get done now, and I understand that. So, you know, we're in a really pretty tight dilemma here. I was thinking with, talking with Dr. Shepherd, just briefly, you know, asking him, because, you know, when we did the one-time money, the one-time bond, not bond money, but the one-time monies that we had from our savings and that type thing, if I'm not mistaken, I think there was maybe 200,000, somewhere thereabout, still left that we haven't spent of that. Now, is, Kelly, is that in a separate account, or is that in our general fund right now?
It's in our general fund.
So, it's, okay, so that's part of the general fund, that's part of whatever we have, that's part of it. Okay, all right. Well, I was thinking, of course, if it's already in the general fund, it's not going to matter, because it's all one big pot, anyway. But we haven't spent that money, and it was money that we had intended on spending. And I could see us using some of that money for items two, three, four, and five, as Ms. Carpenter had suggested there. And, but on item one, though, I tell you, I'm going to be sort of hard-pressed to, hard convinced, that, you know, that we don't have that money. I mean, we do, but I'd rather see us using it on something else. The 200,000, we was going to go ahead and spend anyway, we can divvy that up however we can to do these two, three, four, five, whatever we can get with that, and then find out if we're going to have a new source of money to us. And then I know, Dave, also, you talked, mentioned this before, about multiple bond referendums, which is more than likely what it's going to take to get this done. And so, if you're looking at that, we look at, as Mr. Kiger added to my earlier comments, if the commissioners say, yeah, we need a bond, and I think they'll go along with it. I really think that the commissioners, you may have one or two that says, no, I don't want to do it, but that's not really, all we need is three to say yes. And if those three says yes, then it will go before the voters, and the voters will have to say one way or the other. But you think about it now, May 2014, the bond would be passed, if it passed, then it would be the spring of 2015, before we get access to the money. Of course, in the meantime, we could be doing some of these things, particularly if we already had these assessments done, right? All right, but by the time we get started on this, the assessments are done in 2014, we get the money in 2015, 2016, and then we have to do another bond, because the, I mean, the cost for what we found out in this study has got to come from somewhere. So, then you're looking at 16 for another bond, and then the 17 for the funds to come available, and so it just goes on and on, and that was the point that I was trying to make earlier. And none of that makes this go away, it's a big problem. But I hope what I said made some sense to some of yous, anyway. But I'm trying to think ahead, trying to think down the road. I just don't want to see us pay for something that we're not going to be able to use for years to come, more than likely. And that's just my thoughts. I mean, if you can make it happen faster, that would be good, but I just personally don't see how that can happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Schu. You know, it really would be nice if it was done prior to we start making our requests. I mean, the overlap there doesn't really help us any, but that's neither here nor there at this point. We will-
And part of that may just simply be the firm we choose, too.
Well, okay.
Because if there's, you know, if they can put four teams on the ground, and, you know, instead of doing it with a single team, I mean, a lot of that is all in play yet, and I guess I don't, I was asked to join two companies, two departments together, and make them work. What I'm telling you, this is the business plan for these departments. Without it, we have no plan. We simply have a handful of paper that says we have a lot of needs. Nobody believes it, it's too thick to read through it, and in fact, it doesn't have the detail it should have to convince anybody it's what we need. We need the business plan, and that's all I can tell you. I've been at this a long time, and I can tell you that without this, I don't care what kind of conversation we have with the county commissioners, I don't care what conversation we have with the taxpayers, there is not a belief behind it in terms of what we have to show them, because we don't have the real detail. And that's the simple reality of this.
Okay. Well, that, we delved in a little bit of two through five, but let's go back and revisit those specifically. So, let's talk about those, and we will start with Mr. Walter.
Are these action items for next week's individually?
Well, I think, my opinion is that we would list each one separately on the action agenda, that would be my recommendation to the board.
Okay. Again, what makes up the cost? 75,000?
It's based on 40-plus years of doing this. I can tell you that it takes, first of all, we have no drawings. It takes somebody sitting down, pulling together what information we have, and going out and literally doing existing conditions drawings, enough to at least work and develop a plan for us. In many cases, we have no survey. So, I've been, I've tried to incorporate, you know, what it would take to even get to the point of starting a design process. And, you know, I looked at about, for the larger projects, about $25,000 in pure engineering, just to get the utilities, the topo, the survey work, and all the drawings pulled together.
And we don't have any of that.
Not for most of these. We have bits and pieces, but we don't have it all, no. And unfortunately, a lot of the firms that did the work are no longer in existence.
Okay, because they're older schools, I can see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm more apt to support doing these individual assessments, to know exactly what we're going to be spending our money on, and a plan. And it still seems like, just looking at it, it's kind of high, but you told me there's more to it than-
Yeah, there really is in this case. If we had a set of documents, and we'd say, you know, we'd like you to take a look at this, assess it, and tell us, you know, what we can do with it, that's one thing. But even, and I look at Central as being, I'm going to say, one of the more, not necessarily newer schools, but one of the ones that hasn't changed all that much, you know, it's had additions, even there, we don't have a complete set of documents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, y'all have basically heard my comments, the only one that I have a real concern, and I mentioned to you, and I'd like you to check the Glenn Center, to see what documents with them, to see what possibly is out there. I think there may be some, really, some documents that we may not know about, that, like, structure documents and things that may be possibly out there. Also, would you be discussing with the staff there to see what maybe, you know, as I mentioned, you know, like we did at Concord, the, what they maybe would want, whether it be the cafeteria, the library, or a gym? You know, where we went to Northwest, you know, their big concern, they wanted their gym. They didn't, you know, they didn't go for the cafeteria, where Concord wanted their cafeteria.
Yes.
You know, what is their preference? You know, if we're, they're going to go for a big thing. You know, the 1.5 million was Northwest Gym, and, you know, they really could have used the cafeteria. So, you know, what is the school themselves wanting?
Absolutely.
So, will you be talking with staff?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Part of that initial work is going to be, I'm sure, several meetings with staff to develop a program and a mission statement for, you know, where the school's going to be going in the future.
And one thing I didn't know if we ever did, I mean, I know we talk with staff, you know, the staff may, or the school administration may have a different approach. Have we ever met or had a meeting with the PTAs there, or the Parents Association? Because, you know, the staff may have a different approach than what the parents have. And I wondered if we ever did that, when we're doing something like this, to say, okay, school, we're going to have a meeting, and invite the PTA and the administration, because, you know, it's the parents and the students that are there, and I've wondered if we ever had a approach like this, because, you know, that's what it's all about. And to me, I think, you know, if we're going to do this, and it's going to be a bond, to me, this is the approach we ought to take, because it's about the community, the students, and the facility. So, you know, that may be approach we may want to take.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, on, one of these, which is the Glenn Center, we know that the Carreras Education Foundation is putting together a team to do some research on what it would cost to renovate that building. And so, I don't necessarily think that if they can get monies from another source, that we should have to invest $75,000, especially if they're going to be looking to other organizations. Pardon?
Was that just the auditorium?
That was looking at the facility, and to me, you wouldn't bring a guy in to look just at the auditorium, you would look at the whole facility and do one piece of work, not smatterings of work. But one of the things in our September meeting, when we had this discussion, on our agenda was, what was the functional use of the building going to be? And then, whatever requirements, facilities maintenance needed to have in that building, whatever their build on that. So, we owed them two pieces of information, so that they could go ahead and hire this consultant to help give them the cost for this renovation of this building, with some historical perspective to it, not that they wanted to maintain the historical, they didn't want to go like, like a historical home kind of thing, but... So, that's my concern about the $75,000 there. I don't want a duplicated effort, and if the Carreras Education Foundation is going to do this, then we should just be advisors to them and help them craft, have craft the document that they need to provide to this person, because they were putting together a team, from what I understand, to help them with this process. And they've now got their director, so hopefully, in the next month or two, they'll be moving forward and begging us for information to help them do that. So, on that, on number four, I would want to kind of table that particular one for the future, until we find out what Carreras Education Foundation is going to do. As far as the other three, I don't have any problems with number two, number three, or number five. I know that when you look at what a facility's needs are, and you don't have any as-bills, and that means as-bills from structurals, as-bills from mechanical and piping, as-bills from electricals, and you don't know where things terminate and begin and end, then you've got a lot of work you've got to do to recreate the structure, to figure out how can you, how can you do renovation to the structure? And that's part, that's what this money is involved with, is kind of creating a, an as-built, maybe not to a huge detail, but at least giving you as-built for all those, all those support functions in that building. And so, it's a fair price, based on where I've been and what we've done in my lifetime.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu, do you have further, no further comments on two through five? Mr. Harrison?
No.
Okay, Dr. Phillips?
Well, I, first of all, I completely agree with Carolyn, that if we want to have any hope of selling this bond to the public, we have to give them the details as to what we're going to do with the money, and without these studies, we can't do that. So, I definitely am in favor of this. Now, as far as the Glenn Center goes, I sit on the board as liaison for the Carreras County Education Foundation, they don't have $75,000 right now. So, if we were going to ask them to do this study, I don't think that they could raise the money and get it done by the time the bond is going to be discussed in public. So, we have the money, let's get it going, and then we can ask the Carreras County Education Foundation to allocate their fundraising towards getting the rest of the project done, because I think we're just going to try to get some basics, I think, is the thought, that will help with the, maybe making things handicap accessible, and utility upgrades and things like that. And then, as far as the actual renovation of the auditorium itself, to make it performance-ready, that would be where we would ask the outside groups to help raise money for that. So, I, yeah, you could, you may want to check with the new director and to see if that's, that I've got, because I don't have my signals crossed, and maybe they can contribute some to the 75,000, which, of course, would help. But I know for a fact they wouldn't be able to give us all that money tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Phillips. I don't have any further comments, I think we've pretty much kicked it around enough. Is everybody okay if we have each one as an individual item? Okay, Ms. Monroe, that's what we will do for those items. So, with that, we will move on to 4.04. Thank you, Dave and Lynn, for your time and patience in talking about that. And 4.04, we will ask our attorney, Mr. Mark Enricus, to discuss our memorandum of agreement with our CCC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Education, along with the Kannapolis Board of Education and the Rowan Community College, have had for several years agreement regarding the operation of the Early College. What has come to our attention this year, we actually, there has not been an agreement signed for this year, and there were some discussions between our folks on our side and Rowan Community College regarding maintenance of mobile units. We had provided some mobile units, actually, in 2010, we sold four mobile units to the county for a dollar each, which were then located over at the community college. Some of those mobile units are in need of repair, and there have been discussions back and forth about whose responsibility that is to repair it. What we are proposing, after a meeting with Dr. Shepherd, is that we maintain the three units where we have students, and that they maintain the unit where the community college has students. So, what I've done is taken the existing agreement that we had before, and what you've got on your agenda is a redlined version that makes two changes. One is to incorporate that provision on the mobile unit, so that we would maintain the three where our students are, and they would maintain the unit where their students are. Also, we realize this is, it's been set up for action item every year for approval, and that didn't happen this year. So, rather than running a situation where we have potentially no agreement in place, our thought was to make it so either side can terminate as of the end of a semester, it may be easier for both boards to have an ongoing, or for all three boards, to have an ongoing agreement that can be terminated, rather than one that requires it being back, brought back before the board each year. So, our thought was to make that modification. Over the weekend, I did get thoughtful questions from Mr. Phillips and Mr. Walter about both some changes, we do need to update some of the contact information and other kind of technical changes, and I'll make those suggestions from both of those, and have that ready for your review for next week. There were also some questions I didn't know the answer to, that I think Vince Fishback, who's our director of the program, would know about some of the fee sharing, and I understand he'll be able to get me that information. I can get that to you this week, in terms of what fees are shared by Kannapolis. I know each of you had several questions on kind of the structure. There was originally a grant, I think, from the Gates Foundation that paid for a lot of this, and I'm not sure how much we're getting from that, or the timeframe on that, and I'll, I can check on that and answer the other questions. And I can try to answer some tonight, but I did, I did get both of those emails this weekend, and we'll work with the superintendent and with Vince to get you those other, more general questions about how the Early College works, so.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Rod, did you want to follow up on anything that Mark just said? And it sounds like we've got a revised document, this is not the, those revisions are not in here, because I hadn't had a chance to look at this.
They have not, I have not had a chance to make, to make those revisions in this document.
Okay.
And I'd welcome any other feedback. My thought was, I'd take the two emails and the new contact information, which I had to update, anyway, and any other comments from tonight, and then circulate a new, a new revised version.
Okay, Mr. Walter, would you like to have any comments? So, we're still, we'll be talking about an amendment to the existing agreement?
We could do it as an amendment. I actually think what we had done each year is kind of have a new one-year agreement, so my thought is, we will have a new agreement that we'll be continuing, so, instead of, because there really is no existing agreement. The other, the agreement that was signed ended in June of 2013, so there's not really a current agreement.
It did say automatically, it renews upon mutual agreement with the parties, because I did look that up, it was in, I guess, two years ago, we had proved it, so it would still be in effect if we had a mutually, mutually agreement.
Well, it could be extended from year to year with mutual agreement, but there was no vote from our board or their board to extend it.
Or to terminate for that.
Or, and there was no vote to terminate. And the Early College is continuing, continued last semester, is continuing this semester, so there's no, and I don't, for the viewing public, there's not a, I don't think there's any issue about the program continuing, it's just that we have not taken the formal step of reviewing, renewing the agreement that talks about how costs are going to be shared. So, it's been a successful program, and we intend to continue it, we just, and I think this is a step to making it so that the agreement automatically renews unless either side wants to terminate it or amend it. And this is, this issue with the modulars is one of the issues that came up that we wanted to clarify in this version.
Okay, well, as long as it has an effective date of that, and you've got my other comments, I don't have anything further.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you want to comment on the agreement?
No, I have no problem with the agreement. One of the, one thing I would like to get, if I could get some data, how many students do we currently have enrolled in that? And what is our cost, what is our breakdown cost per student with this program? If we could just get, I mean, that can just come to us in our report, but I was just curious on how many we have now enrolled, and again, what our breakdown, you know, per student on that is, if I could get that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker?
I'm fine with the agreement, as, and whatever builds the others have, I don't really have a lot of problems with that, but I did want to know, what is RSS?
Typo.
Is that a typo? Okay.
Rowan's Albert.
Yeah, it was Rowan's Albert.
Okay, because that wasn't, that wasn't-
Yeah, that was one of the other comments, and I don't, I don't, I think we'll either need to define that or take that term out.
Right, it was an acronym that wasn't defined.
It was definitely undefined, no, I appreciate that, that's something I think- No, I appreciate that. That's something I think either Mr. Walter or Mr. Phillips also noted on. Thanks.
Mr. Schu?
I'm okay.
Okay, Mr. Harrison?
I'm okay.
Okay, Dr. Phillips?
As Mark said, I sent him my comments, most of them were just little nitpicks, like acronyms and things like that. But the most substantive one was that in sections 3-1 and 3-2, it talks in several places, it says that the Cabarrus County Board of Education will pay Rowan Cabarrus Community College for fees for all the Early College students. And I, my feedback is that, no, we should, we will pay for all of the Early College students coming from our enrollment area. We're not going to pay for the ones that come from Kannapolis. So I want to make sure that that is in whatever agreement is that we're asked to approve.
Thank you, yes. But the comments and questions that were raised by both Mr. Walter and Mr. Phillips were very detailed and very good and very astute. So I'm confident that Mark's revisions will hit the mark, and Dr. Shepherd wants to make a comment on the, on the agreement.
When those students enroll in the Early College, they become students of the Cabarrus County Schools, even though they're students in Kannapolis, and we receive the funding, the state funding for those students. So I want to, I don't want the public to, or folks in Kannapolis to misunderstand that. We'll research to see, make sure they're paying their portion, but they are our students at that point, they have to relinquish their responsibility.
Okay, well, if that's true, then I think that needs to be in the agreement. It needs to be stipulated in writing that that's part of the agreement, because otherwise they could come back in a couple of years and say, oh, hey, you guys said you were going to pay for all of it.
Okay, good point. And we'll put that on the action agenda, since we'll get a revised document this week, and maybe a little other data that we can look at. So we'll have that on the action agenda. Okay, with that, board members, that concludes our meeting, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Stand by.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.